I'd like to call it ordered tonight's meeting of the Gardner zoning of appeals. Today's date is May 17th, 2022. Before we begin tonight's hearings, I would like to go over a few ground rules upon which this board operates. In Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in the sequence in which they appeared in the public notice, although the board is under no obligation to adhere to that sequence. By law, we are required to publish the notice in the newspaper once a week for two consecutive weeks and mail a copy of the notice to have two interested parties. All hearings are open to the public and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear on his or her own behalf or be represented by an agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board and representatives of the city shall be heard. The abudders to the property also present shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. Members of the board who are hearing the case may direct appropriate questions during the hearing to the applicant. The board must render its decision regarding variance requests within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was filed with the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision regarding special permits within 90 days after the closing of the public hearing. Three members of the board are so in favor of the variance or special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of the board is provided for in the zoning act. More information can be found online under Chapter 48, Section 17 of Massachusetts General Laws. No variance or special permit or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office and no appeals have been filed and it is recorded in the registry of deeds for the county and/or district. The burden of supporting the need for a variance or special permit rests with the applicant or representative of the applicant. The board requested each person identify himself or herself as their name, address, before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's meeting, to my left is Michael Gary, clerk. To my right is third member Raymond LaFawn, and I'm tonight, I'm Randy Haglund, acting as the chair. This meeting will be recorded and livestreamed. Does anybody object to this? The agenda was duly posted outside the city clerk's office, and I believe it was mailed out to all the abudders and interested parties. Again, it's today's May 17th, 2022, and I'd like to make this one brief announcement. Any person may make a video or a recording of an open session of the meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to the reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents referenced or used during the meeting are to be submitted to the board in duplicate. All documents shall become part of the official record of the meeting. On tonight's agenda, we have five cases before us. It's Case 2022-0401. It's for a finding for Alan Belanger on Blake Street. Case number 2022-0402, it's a special permit from Tony Molina for 376 Chestnut Street. Those are both continued cases. We have three new cases this evening. Case number 2022-0501, it's a special permit from James Parmenter, 85 Chelsea Street, for an in-law apartment. Case number 2022-0502, it's a special permit from Robert Hullett, 69 Lincoln Street, for Dan Studio. And case number 2022-0503, it's a variance for Donna Longo Gorski at 66 Brook Lane. Okay, and other items on the agenda, we have some announcements, no announcements of correspondence, and we have approval of a minutes later. Okay, ready to go?
Ready to go.
First case on the agenda tonight, it's a continuation case. It's Case Number 2022-0401. It is for a finding. It's for a finding, applicant's name is Alan Belanger, 161 Chelsea Street. It's for a warehouse and storage with a professional office. It was denied because the application to amend the use variance, which was issued by this board, it was just Case Number 2021-0401, for warehouse, storage, and professional office at 161 Chelsea Street, Gardner. Parcel ID R17-20-16. It's located in a single-family one residential zoning district, and it was denied because it did not comply with the granted use variance. Again, Case Number 2021-04, and it was issued on June the 2nd, 2021. Mr. Belanger, agent or attorney, Mr. Marchetti.
Thank you. So Brian Marchetti from McCarty Engineering, 42 Jungle Road, Lomester, Massachusetts. Here tonight on behalf of Westmany Storage, Alan Belanger, for the parcel on Blake Street and Chelsea Street. So we were here a year or so ago for a use variance for 161 Chelsea Street. We met with this board a month or so ago to review the parcel to the rear of the building on Blake Street. The applicant acquired the rear parcel so we could access the back of the building for three additional storage units. We walked the site with the zoning board on April 30th. We discussed several items on the property, particularly, I guess, with respect to landscaping and stormwater.
Maybe it's best to, from your perspective, to summarize our site visit, items that were discussed.
Yep. Absolutely. I just submitted to you a response to comments to Rob Oliver. He provided a letter a month or so ago.
Rob Oliver being the city engineer, just for the record.
Yep. In addition to the site plan that we had discussed, providing details on items that we explored on our site walk. So the cover letter that I provided details what was discussed on the site walk, so if you want, I can just read that cover letter. I think that'll update us all.
Sure.
So, Dear Mr. LaFawn, McCarty Engineering Inc. is providing this letter to summarize the revisions to the site plan since the zoning board met on-site on Saturday, April 30th, with the applicant and McCarty Engineering to review the existing site and discuss the proposed development plan. The majority of the discussion pertained to topography, layout of storage units in the building, stormwater improvements, landscaping, and screening. The improvements discussed are reflected on the attached site plan. So due to topography around the existing building, there will be an approximate fill of four feet required on the northeast side of the building to accommodate parking and access to finished floor elevation of the building. An underground infiltration basin will be installed below this parking field to collect and infiltrate the stormwater runoff from the proposed impervious area and the majority of the building rooftop. The retaining wall will be installed around the perimeter of the parking lot with a privacy fence and landscaping to screen the proposed activity on-site. The proposed driveway acts from Blake Street will require an approximate four-foot cut at the building in order to access the proposed storage units on the east side of the existing building. And if you recall, those are the units that would be in the basement, lower level of the building. An at-grade infiltration basin was proposed on the Blake Street frontage to collect and treat the stormwater runoff. As no existing stormwater infrastructure is available to tie into on Blake Street, runoff will discharge toward Blake Street as an existing conditions. The site plan has been revised to show adequate snow storage on both Chelsea and Blake Street parcels as requested by the city engineer. Lighting for the building will include 15-watt motion-activated LED building-mounted lights above each storage door, which will be shielded to limit the light coverage to the area immediately.
But the equivalent wattage on an incandescent with 15-watt, do you know?
The equivalent for those are typically around 100 watt.
Okay.
Let's see here.
Sorry.
Yep, no problem. Landscaped areas are shown on the plan along the perimeter of both parcels outside of the pavement limits. They'll consist of a mixture of grasses, ornamental shrubs, and street trees situated so as not to interfere with snow storage locations. The landscaped area will be maintained to enhance the property and will result in a significant improvement to the curb appeal of the property. The final modification on the site plan was to exclude the actual storage layout within the building. If you recall, the last plan that we had submitted, we showed us chopping up the building, putting doors on the side. We discussed at the site walk that the applicant is having a structural engineer review the building, and the layout that we had previously showed because of structural concerns in the building, thickness of the floor slabs and things like that, it's changing. It's kind of a moving target, so we don't want to specify an exact quantity of units on the plan because it really hasn't been determined yet. So based on the unit size, the building could accommodate as little as 12 larger units with roll-up doors or 35 smaller units of three-foot doors. So if they do basically small kind of closets on the sides of the buildings, there could be a lot more, but if you go with the conventional roll-up doors, it would accommodate approximately 12. So a structural engineer and architect have been engaged to survey the building and provide the actual buildable layout. When this detail has been finalized, plans will be submitted to obtain building permits from the City of Gardner Building Department. So it's our desire to include the maximum unit count in the amended zoning variance so that the applicant doesn't have to reapply as final details are determined. So we're hoping to just be able to, with the variance, it's a use variance, it doesn't really pertain to specific unit counts in the building, that'll all be reviewed by the building inspector as we get those details. And this was consistent with the previous use variance that was granted.
Just to ask you if you would read the response regarding Mr. Oliver's, you know, five points.
Yes, absolutely.
Because most people here have not seen or heard of it.
Okay. So when we submitted our application, Rob Oliver, the city engineer, provided five comments to our plan. The first comment was Blake Street and Tarsh Street are both unaccepted private ways. So the applicant is proposing to access the rear of the building via Blake Street. There's really no question in that comment, it's merely a statement for record. It's acknowledged, we know it's a private road, but it does have adequate access to get to the Blake Street parcel. And several houses are located on Blake Street, so it is used as a way today. The second comment was proposed parking spaces and driveways are required to be paved and provided with adequate drainage. So the site plan that you see in front of you, we previously noted we were going to pave within the right-of-way up to the property line. It was approximately 15-foot paved apron, and then we were going to leave the rest of the parking as compacted gravel. Rob Oliver had concerns about stability, striping, and things like that, so we're proposing now just to pave everything. So we're showing this final asphalt. Parking spaces shall be located at least 10 feet from property lines. Our response is parking spaces have been relocated to more than 10 feet from the property line and dimensions have been added to the plan. So you can see on the north portion of our site plan that we submitted, the closest parking area is 13 feet to the northern lot line, so we exceed that 10-foot requirement. The plan submitted does not indicate adequate snow storage area for the proposed parking and driveways. You'll see on the plan there's a revision clouded area on the north, even on the northeast and west side of the upper parking lot and on both sides of the lower parking area. So that's been added to the plan, and we feel there's more than adequate space. And then the final comment was any activity that disturbs 10,000 square feet or more of land area requires a stormwater management permit. So a stormwater drainage analysis has been submitted to Rob Oliver with a complete write-up, so it's in his possession now. It doesn't require a public meeting, that's reviewed solely through the engineering department, so it doesn't require a public meeting for that permit.
Mr. Marchetti, I have a question.
Yes.
Where you've designated the snow storage areas, what is to prevent, when that melts, of going on the abutting properties?
So the site has been laid out so that the retaining walls and everything within that area will drain to the catch basin. Up in the northern parking lot, it will drain to the catch basin, and there's an underground infiltration basin that you can see, it's a 27-chamber storm tech system below the parking lot. So in that location, we've done test pits, groundwater was about five feet below grade. We're adding about four feet of fill in that location for the parking lot, so we have about nine feet of groundwater, so there's plenty of room for an underground storage system. So stormwater will, and any snow melt, will drain to that one catch basin in that parking lot. The parking lot and driveways off of Blake Street, it's laid out so that at the lower elevation toward Blake Street, there's a three-foot-deep depression, another infiltration basin down on that lower side, so the stormwater runoff and snow melt will get to that basin. The drainage analysis that we provided, it meets the City of Gardner stormwater regulations, it meets the Mass DEP stormwater regulations, so we're confident we'll have no issues with Rob Oliver. We've designed it so that the post-development peak flow rates and flow volumes are mitigated to less than existing in the proposed condition.
Mr. Marchetti, on the revised plan you submitted today, the three parking spaces off of Blake Street, you've got the two spaces on either side, which are, you know, I'll say the 10-foot buffer to the property lines. What is your intention to prevent vehicles from parking there?
There are three bays in the back of the building, so we located the three parking spaces so that they're in front of the doors. It's an area for circulation for maneuvering. They could be hatched with a crosshatch to make it look like it's not a parking space if you so desire, but we kept it, the width that it's at, I believe it's about 35 feet wide in total, just so there's room in the back of the building for swinging doors and maneuvering space.
So if they're all utilized, there's only three doors back here?
Yes.
So five cars normally aren't going to go in there?
No, and there wasn't enough width in that parking area to accommodate a full nine-foot wide.
You can't accommodate the 10-foot setback for the two parking spaces on the sides, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, I think if it becomes an issue, I would say, I just suggest you could put up a no parking sign here or...
And it could be just as simple as pavement markings.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marchetti, for the update to the site plan and answering city engineers' questions. Questions from the board, Mike? Where do you foresee these external lights being affixed to the building? I mean, 100 watts, 100 watt equivalent.
They're 15-watt and they're shielded, they're straight down in front of the door, so there will be no light spillage coming off of these. The applicant has them on other storage facilities that are just solar powered, mounted directly, and it just casts a downlight directly down the pavement front door. That's why we didn't propose any light poles at the perimeter of the parking area, these are just specifically in front of the door.
Okay.
For immediate lighting.
Any other questions? I was interested, you mentioned the perk test, that was actually going to be one of my questions.
Yeah, and we, the system actually got significantly bigger than we originally proposed, just to try to minimize the amount of water that discharges from there. It's kind of a difficult site just because there's no stormwater infrastructure in Blake Street or Chelsea Street to tie into, so it's all dependent on overland flow.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Nope, I think everything's been answered.
All right, I'll open it up to the audience. Any representatives of the city who'd like to comment with regard to this application? The only representative of the city present is the building commissioner, and he's indicating that he has no comments at this time. Any abudders to this property who'd like to comment with regard to this application? Are there any abudders present who would like to comment with regard to this application? Again, one more time, any abudders? Any others that would like to comment with regard to this application? Any other interested parties or others that would like to comment with regard to this application? Last time, anybody else like any comments, questions? No?
I'm all set.
I'm good. Entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, hearing closed.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. We'll have a future decision meeting on this case.
You'll be notified when the hearing is going to be for the decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marchetti.
Thank you, Mr. Marchetti.
Have a good day.
All right, the second case, second hearing this evening is Case Number 2022-0402. Mr. Molina, it's yours, and as soon as I read the advertisement here.
Thank you. Good evening.
It's much easier when we have a secretary to put stuff together and organize our lives for us here.
Yes, it is, isn't it?
Would you like a copy of the site plans, or you guys already have a good?
I don't know what I was going to add.
Okay, Case Number 2022-0402, it's a special permit, the applicant is Tony Molina, Molina Realty LLC. Site location is 376 Chestnut Street, and it's a request to renovate 376 into a three-family, to restore it back to a three-family residence. It was denied because it was located in Zoning District General Residential 3, and it did not comply with Chapter 675, Article 1, Colon 1, Number 4, three and four-family dwellings of the City of Gardner. This property has lost its zoning status by right. The Table of Uses states that the request requires a special permit to be issued by the zoning board of appeals. Again, Mr. Molina.
Yes, I'm here, Tony Molina from 376 Chestnut Street in Gardner, looking to reinstate a three-family status to renovate as a three-family occupancy. We had a site visit on April 30th on the site. A few of the comments that came through, do you mind if I grab my folder real quickly?
Absolutely, thank you. Just to reiterate, we did, this is a continued hearing. The board did receive testimony at the last meeting, it was a Zoom meeting, there was a site visit that was held on the 30th?
30th.
30th of April. It was attended by myself and member Gary. Go ahead, Mr. Molina.
Yes, so yeah, some of the comments we had at the site meeting was, one was to, comments from our neighbors that he wants some privacy from the parking lot to his property, so we came to an agreement that we will be installing a barrier with cypress trees to create a natural barrier and privacy for, you know, for light pollution of the cars shining towards his yard. And that's all been agreed upon between our neighbors. And the other question we had on site was what we were going to do to prevent melting snow water from running to the neighbors a lot, so on that, we're going to create a natural burn of soil to create, so the water stay within the property, 376 Chestnut Street. As far as lighting, we are going to be using ballers, three-foot ballers with baffled lighting, you know, contain system, and other than that, I think those were the comments.
Those were the three major items. One of the things that I noted from the site visit too, between the application that we received and the site visit, in the application, or in actuality, the parking has been turned 90 degrees.
That's correct, yes.
So now, if somebody's driving up from Chestnut Street, headlights are only going to occur while they're coming up the driveway, but as soon as they start to turn right, it goes into the backyards of the abutting properties?
Indeed, correct.
Okay, and the point of, it was noted too, that the parking spaces were already numbered, were painted and numbered. So again, this is a special permit. I don't think we need to revisit all nine criteria for special permit.
I'll just state too, for the record, I did not attend a site visit with these two gentlemen. I did come several days later because I had a conflict with the day they were going, and I saw the parking had been rearranged. This is where he's putting his shrubbery trees here in the back to prevent, you know, sight coming in from his abudder.
Correct.
And I just wanted to ask a question, you talked about the lighting.
Yep.
So where is that going to be installed?
At the end of the pathway, so we're going to create a pathway from the house to the parking area, and so we're going to, it's going to be four ballers, two on either end of the driveway and two coming down the walkway towards the egress door to the building.
All right, so that'd be like the security lighting for that driveway for the tenants?
Correct, yes, correct, just luminance for path lighting.
Okay.
I'm all set.
All set, Mike? I have no questions either, so I'll open it up to the audience if there's any additional comments. Are there any representatives of the city who'd like to speak with regard to this application? The building commissioner is indicating has no further comments at this time. Are there any abudders to the property who'd like to speak with regard to this application? I don't see Mr. Meeger here. Any abudders to the property? Any other interested parties who'd like to speak with regard to this application? Any interested parties who'd like to speak with regard to this application? Hearing none? Entertain a motion to close the hearing?
Motion made.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close the hearing, we'll have a decision meeting in the near future. And you'll receive, similar to what we notified the previous applicant, you'll receive notification of that meeting if you wish to attend.
Fantastic, thank you, thanks for your time, very much valued your time.
Do we have a copy of this already?
Yes.
Okay, you can have a copy.
Thank you.
Third case this evening, it's a new application. Man should get it out of this. You know, the guy on the right is supposed to be handling that, you know.
Yes? I'm in training.
Okay, it's Case Number 2022-0501, it was for a special permit. Applicant is James and Rebecca Parmenter, 85 Chelsea Street, and requests us to construct and operate an in-law apartment. It was denied because the application to construct and operate an in-law apartment at 85 Chelsea Street located in Gardner, Mass. on Parcel ID R17259 is located in a single-family one residential district and does not comply with Chapter 675, Attachment 1, Colon 6, Table of Uses, Number 84, an in-law apartment in the detached structure. The zoning code states that the use requested requires a special permit for use in a special, a single-family one zoning district. Mr. Parmenter?
Yes.
Your, Mr. Parmenter?
James Parmenter, 85 Chelsea.
Okay, why don't you present what you would like to do, please?
We'd like to put this in, this is a three-car garage with an in-law apartment. It's going to be for my daughter. It's pretty much it for my cars, and it's about it. My daughter, I own space, and I definitely need the car to store some of my cars.
Okay, and under special permit, there's nine conditions that you have to address.
Okay.
And...
I, I think you submitted a revised application where you attempted to answer those nine conditions?
Yes.
Would you like to address each of them individually tonight for the?
Now, I didn't understand all of those conditions.
Okay.
You probably really have to speak loud, 'cause I'm deaf, my hearing aid isn't good.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Well, I apologize, I don't, I don't know if my, my, my breathing will permit me to speak much louder than I'm speaking.
Yes, okay.
The, under, under the, the code, uh, the state law, there's requirements when you get, apply for a special permit, you have to answer nine, or you have to justify nine criteria?
Yes.
To be able to convince the board to allow your use?
Okay.
Okay. We, we can go through them, if you want to walk through them, if you want more time to prepare?
No, just, uh, walks through them.
Alright. Here, why don't you, these are, these are the criteria, you can have those, you may look at those while we go through it, and then, uh...
Take care.
It'll, um... It'll help you answer the questions. Um, criteria number one. Proposables, the proposal is suitably located in the neighborhood in which is proposed and of the city, and, and is compatible with the neighborhood character, existing uses and other uses permitted by right.
Yes, um, it definitely have enough, uh, area. Do you guys see the plans?
I believe it was submitted as part of your application, is it something different than?
No, it's actually the same plan that you have there. I went over it, uh, we discussed how we were gonna lay this out, um, parallel to the house. I have more than enough property, more than enough from the, uh, line of the next properties over.
Now, is this, um...
That's better plan.
Is this different?
Yeah, that's my plot plan. That's the plot plan right there.
Because this does not show a parallel to the house.
Well, that's, what does it show?
Askew.
Yeah, it's just, the house is pointed out of the road, and it's on a angle on the property.
These are just of the building itself.
Just of the building.
Yeah, that's what we gotta work on.
Yeah.
So you have to define why is it within the character of neighborhood and why?
Absolutely, um, I mean, there's a, there's a two-car garage next door, um, and, and across the way, there's another two-car garage with a upstairs, finished, uh, room upstairs there. I mean, um, my house is a smaller house, it doesn't have very much room, so that would help us with storage, 'cause we don't have an attic. We actually have a, uh, post and beam house with a small room upstairs, that's it, it's all open concept. And the storage in the cellar is, uh, we do get flooding in the cellar. Uh, we have drainage out to the road that was put in years ago. Probably about 26 years ago, we had drainage put in to keep our cellar from flooding, but we still get it occasionally, and we have no storage.
Okay, uh, to maintain the character, and I know you said this house is a two-car garages?
Yep.
Well, there's a lot of houses that have two-car garages, so that's normal.
This is a three-car garage.
A three-car, but also it's an in-law apartment is probably the bigger issue. How many, are there any other in-law apartments in the, on the street or in the area?
Um, actually, next door is a two, two bedroom, uh, two, two-family with a two-car garage.
Why don't we put this up on the easel?
It's not an in-law, but it's a two-family though. It's still a two-family though, right?
Yeah.
Considered almost the same.
Do we want to put this on the easel? Or put this on the easel over there, sir, and then we, that way you can, the audience will have the opportunity to, to see it as well, and... What you're planning on doing.
Alright.
Hopefully, you'll be able to pick it up for, for TV too.
So, basically, I mean, this is just gonna sit on an angle facing our house.
More our house than, than anybody else's house, so our house faces this way, and it's gonna face towards our house. Our driveway is gonna come up and, and go into the, oh, the perimeter of the garage over here, so we can store, I have classic car and a classic Jeep. And like I said, I have no storage in my house, so that would help my daughter out, 'cause we really don't have a bedroom for her, we do, but it's very small in our house that we own.
But giving character to the neighborhood, I think it, personally, I think it would look classy.
Now, uh, the proposed garage will meet all other setback requirements?
Everything, yeah, we got the plan right there, we had an engineer drop the whole plan.
That's why I asked, just for the sake of the audience, I noted, I noted that it did. Okay, um, why don't we go to the second criteria that you must, uh, justify? The application must provide convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site in relation to adjacent streets, properties, and improvements.
We sit back quite a ways from the road, um, our driveway, is that what you're talking about? Safety pulling onto the road? Well, our driveway is actually there already, we're actually gonna go up our driveway and go in towards the garage, so we'll have plenty of them to backup turn around.
So there's no further, no additional curb cuts you're planning, no, nothing like that? Can you utilize the existing curb cut, existing?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Alright, number three, uh, proposal should provide adequate space for off-street parking, loading and unloading of vehicles, goods, products, materials, and equipment incidental to the normal operation and establishment of the use.
So basically, again, where the garage is going to be, um, there'll be enough of a turnaround area there, where we're just gonna use the existing driveway, so there won't even have to be any off-street parking whatsoever.
The parking is gonna be right there, she'll have her own parking in, in the garage anyway, and there'd be two for me. So in other words, the, the driveway off the road goes up to our house now. What it's gonna do is it's gonna offset over this way and go up into it. So there's gonna be probably 30 feet, and then another 15 feet at the least to, to come back down into, uh, the regular driveway that's already there.
So you don't have an existing garage on your property?
No.
Okay, okay, just wanted to... Number four, the proposal should provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for proper operation of the use and dispose of surge, refuge, and other waste products and methods of drainage with surface water.
That's gonna be tied back into our house, um, which we are, we're public sewer and water. Um, we're going to run it underground, uh, like you're supposed to into our sewer.
So the wa, there'll be no separate water connection, no separate sewer connection?
It's all being connected from our house to that.
Okay, um, what are you gonna do with the drainage off of the roof of the proposed garage?
Probably drain it, um, the backyard from that area al, as alone, it dips down in that area, so we'll, we'll probably put the drainage to the back of the house. So it, it's like, it's like another 30, 40 feet to the back of the house, and that's all lawn. This is all lawn right now, so we'll put the dr, we'll set, uh, the drainage off towards the back of the house.
Yeah, it should, uh, any runoff from the roof and everything should not be flowing right at your neighbor.
Right.
Nope, it'll be the opposite side, the neighbors on this side, that won't even be close to this side. It'll be out into the backyard, which is another, if I figure it right, another 35 feet from the property line, and then probably another 15 to the house. So you're probably talking 40 to 50 feet tops.
Yeah, your, your site plan says it's 88 feet.
88 feet from, from?
From the back of the proposed garage to property line.
Yeah, for the property line, but that isn't their house. They have a garage right there, but the house is on the other side of the garage.
Oh, I, I, I see, your abutter, your abutter's garage, you're talking.
Okay, that's, so it's from there to the garage, 88 feet?
No, 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 it's 20, looks like probably 20 feet.
Okay, so we're, we're proposing to, let me just show you here, we're proposing, uh, where's this, their garage is here, so we'll be putting the water runoff here, and then the sewers will go into the line, which is right here.
Hey, this is the 20 feet Mr. Haglund was talking about.
Yes, and this is the garage here, their house is over here.
Right, so I need, oh, a flow off the roof should not go this way?
No, it's going to the back.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna make sure it's back here, so you're probably talking 40, 50 feet on the other side of the house, plus the ni, what is it, 19 feet?
Right.
Yeah, so you're talking definitely 40 to 50 feet.
You'll be constructing off of your driveway, an extension of the driveway to go into here?
Can I show you? So this is the driveway here, so we're gonna come from here, we're gonna probably swing it more around that way and come back in like that, so we'll have more than enough room to turn and come out to the road.
Okay.
Good? Thank you.
Okay, fifth criteria that you must address. The proposal shall not constitute a nuisance due to air and water pollution, erosion, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibrations, lights, or visually offensive structures or site features.
Any lights would be facing towards?
Yeah, all the lights will be facing towards our house anyway, we'll have the two-car garage lights, I mean, the double lights on each garage, and those will be censored, uh, they won't be on all night, so those will be facing us, they won't even be facing the road, as you can see in the print.
Okay, um, exterior lighting on the, on the garage, what are you planning for exterior lighting?
We're gonna put, uh, two lights per door, um, do you suggest anymore? Should we put it outside, constant light on?
Well, we can't tell you what to do.
Yeah.
Uh, you have to, you figure out what's normal with the garage, most lights don't stay on all night in the garage.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Motion lights.
Yes, they're all motion lights, two, two per garage door, motion lights, so they won't be on all night, they'll be motion detector.
That's your plan, put on motion lights?
Yes, that's, that's what we plan.
Okay. Let's just say it again, let me see this.
I'll just make a comment while Mr. Haglund's looking at it. It really doesn't come to, come under our purview, but when I looked at your plan for the garage, uh, I did not see a second egress, but that's not under our purview, that will happen. You apply for a building permit, that's our...
Yeah, that's normal.
Commissioner will take care of that.
So there, there will be a, a side door, egress to the stairways, stairwell going up?
Yep.
So you'll have exterior lighting there?
Yes.
Along the abutter's property line?
No, it would be on our side, on our side of the property, so...
It'll be on the, the left side.
Where the deck is located.
On our house.
What?
Our deck, like our deck that's existing, like at the, where are we here, so the existing deck, so where are we here?
Here's your existing deck, yeah.
So we'll be on this, the door will be right over here, that's where the light will be.
That isn't what your plan shows, sir.
It doesn't?
No.
What's it show?
The stairwell's on the right-hand side of the garage.
On the opposite side?
That's what I think, I believe so.
No, I thought it was on the right side.
Right here, sir.
There you go, let him show you.
Here's your garage doors, there's a stairwell.
Those are the three garage doors, and the stairwell's on the...
Oh, I see what he's saying.
We're gonna switch it over then, we'll just switch the, we're gonna have to switch it around. Hmm, shit. No, we can do it there, well, the lights...
I'm just, I'm just...
Yeah, the lights actually will not even affect them at that point, 'cause like I said, the garage, if it is on that side, the garage is right there, which is gonna block the house, 'cause the garage is back here, and the back of their house is in eight feet. So we're over here, the back of the garage in their house is here, so it's not even gonna affect them, even with a motion light over there.
Okay, um...
You can put a motion light on that too.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do, yep, thank you, appreciate that.
Sixth criteria, the proposal should not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to abutters, vehicles, pedestrians.
No, the only thing that, we're just gonna, I mean, pretty much, uh, there's not gonna, there can't be any inconvenience, I wouldn't say pulling out of our own driveway, you know? It, we're far enough from their driveway that it's not even close.
Okay.
Probably 150 feet maybe to their driveway.
Your proposal, is it in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance?
Excuse me, sir?
Is your proposal in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance?
Yes, absolutely.
And why is that?
You're talking about why we're having this built?
No, why, why is it in harmony with the general purpose of the bill, of the ordinance?
What do you, what do you mean?
Why is, why is it compatible with the use of the neighborhood?
See, it almost goes back to my first question of, how many other hu, apart, houses in that area have an in-law apartment?
So they don't, I mean, across the way on Summer Street?
Yeah, there's another two-family here.
Right across the way from us, which you can see. There is a two-car garage with, it's, they don't have it as an in-law apartment, but it is a, you know...
Plus they have a, plus they have a commercial building, uh, two, 300 feet down the road, then they have another commercial building right on Summer Street and Chelsea Street. They have, uh, the old one, with the ambulance where that used to be, and then we have a two-family straight directly across from our house, two-family here, um, several big houses in the area. It's not gonna look odd, the, the car, two-car garage right across the way from our house is, is pretty huge.
Okay. Uh, the proposal, eighth criteria, proposal not have a significant detrimental impact on city services, tax paid, or employment opportunities. And, and I will answer this for you in, 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 in your application, in your case, it will have no effect on city services, probably increase your taxes accordingly. There's no employment opportunities, permanent employment opportunities related to the construction of a garage or an in-law apartment. And number nine, the proposal consistent with the city's community development or master plan. Again, I'll answer that on your behalf, it's, it's, it's extension of a residential, um, existing dwelling on a property. That's what you're, you're, what you're looking for. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to...
Thank you for reading those for us.
Not a problem.
I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, yeah.
It's okay, you have two sheds on your property.
Yes, one's coming down.
Yes, one's coming down.
Which one is coming?
The one in the furthest back, way in the back.
And then the one in the front is getting moved to the back.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's only a little shed, anyway, yep.
I just wanted to know, 'cause it's, it's still standalone buildings and...
Yeah, we don't need too many buildings.
She doesn't like trash, believe me. I can't pull anything in that, yeah, without getting yelled at, which is a good thing.
I'm not going there.
No. Yeah, please.
Okay, um, any other questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
You all set? Okay, I'll open it up to the audience. Any representatives of the city who'd like to comment with regard to this application? Mr. Jean?
Just a, just a couple things, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I don't believe, I don't wanna speak for the DBW, but I don't believe they'll allow these services, as in sewer and water, to go through the existing home. I believe they'll be asking for new services. I don't think that really changes anything for what we're looking at tonight. Um, the other thing is that, uh, Mr. LaFawn brought up the, the second egress that doesn't exist, that will have to exist.
Yep.
It's certainly possible that it could be on the interior, but more than likely, it'll end up being on the exterior, because there's already a stairway on the interior, they take up a lot of room.
Yep.
Uh, I think we need to know where that's going and make sure that we're still okay with setbacks.
I think, um, what it's gonna be is, I'm gonna put a deck out back, with an egress out the back, high out, out back, so it's not gonna have, it's gonna have the same type of lighting, and the second egress will be in the back.
I just, I'm not sure how close you are to the back, or how much room you have or anything.
I, I, how big of a deck?
Um, probably a 10 by 10.
Across the whole back of the garage?
Not the whole back, no. That garage's a lot bigger than that, that's three-car garage.
Well, that's it, I know, when I looked at these plans, I did not see any dimension on the garage at all, so I didn't know how big it was.
The garage is, the dimensions.
36, 24?
Yeah.
Yep.
Forty, 40 by 25.
40 by 25?
Yes, that's what it is, yep. And what I plan on doing, so the stairs are here, so I'll probably put the deck more in the back here, so it doesn't have no effect over here, second egress will come out over here.
Okay, so I, I, I'm gonna speak to the board at this point. What we'd like you to do is update your plans and show where the deck is going to be on your plans, and the size, and where your egress door is gonna be.
Okay.
'Cause we'd rather see it, 'cause then we're gonna address the set of plans.
Okay.
And if we just do it verbally, and down the road, somebody says, well, they said they were going to, and they didn't.
Yeah, but no matter what, I'm not gonna get it without him.
Well, you can get a, you can get a second egress.
Yeah, I'll get a second egress.
But you're not getting, you're not showing the deck.
Yep.
'Cause you are changing your plans.
Alright.
So we'd like to see where the egress is gonna be, if you're putting on a deck, you know, its dimensions. And I'm gonna assume it's not gonna be a covered deck?
No.
You just...
Well, what if I want with a set of stairs on the side?
I was gonna say, could we do something like an exit door?
I just don't wanna go another two months, because the way things are going... I just don't wanna go another two months, because the way things are going right now, if I push, put a set of stairs with a egress door here.
I think, I'm not gonna speak, because that's under a building code. I think you should have a discussion with Mr. Jean.
Well, I'm sure I'll be able to do it, I just gotta okay it with him.
Sitting, sitting here and speaking right now, I have no idea how close to the building is to the property line.
To the other property line, you're talking, can I have?
This additional structure will be in the property line. I don't know if it meets that, but I don't wanna comment.
Yeah.
Well, if you're looking at the proposed go up here, you're talking eighty-one feet to the, on that side. So I'm eighty-one feet from that side of the garage.
Is it the side or the rear property line?
The side.
The side.
If I put it on the side, on, on the left side looking at it, it's eighty-one feet to the property line. I'm putting a set of stairs.
Then you'll be fine.
Okay?
With no deck?
No deck, just set of stairs.
I would rather do that first, like, I think a deck's too much.
You know how much work it is?
Less storage.
Oh.
It already cost me enough for those ten tons.
All right, um, any, any other?
All that being said, I do, I do like the looks of the building and I think it would be in harmony with the neighborhood.
I noticed that. Are there any?
Thank you.
Any butters who would like to speak with regard to this application? Are there any butters who would like to speak with regard to this application? Any butters that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Are there any interested parties present who would like to speak in favor or opposition to this application? Any interested parties? Seeing no activity. I, I, I'm inclined to continue the hearing pending.
I would like the continuance, because I'd like to see somewhere it's just drawn where the second egress is going to be. And anyway, we have to, not gonna render a decision tonight, so we have to go out in a month to ask, suggest, you get in the revision as quick as you can, where it's going to be. Have a chat with Mr. Jean, so he's fully aware of what you're doing. And if he has any comments, he'll make them at that time. And then if we get.
Also, if I may suggest, you had mentioned a deck, maybe in the future you wanna put a deck. Consider how a deck could be put and whether it would meet. You don't necessarily need to build it now, but plan and look forward into the future if you want, if something you think you wanna do. I'm gonna recommend also a site visit.
I'm okay with that.
And I think what we typically would like to do in situations like this is have the four corners of the garage.
Set out.
Set, it can be just rocks, painted rocks, doesn't have to be anything.
I'll paint it all out and.
Doesn't have to be permanent.
Doesn't have to be permanent, just so that we get an idea.
Where everything's.
And we will, why don't we set a schedule?
Tomorrow?
No.
Excellent, I'll pick you up. I'll buy coffee, too.
We set a schedule for the site visit now. Then we don't have to worry about the posting for the secretary. I don't have my calendar in this.
What are you looking at? Twentieth is Friday. I'm tied up at eleven to twelve, but other than that, the day is open.
Not for me.
How about we do it at four AM, I'm up at three.
Not a chance. Yeah, I know, I might, I'd veto that, too. I can do Saturday.
I'm open on the twenty-first.
Saturday? Saturday?
Yep.
Morning, nine o'clock?
That okay with you?
Nine o'clock, Saturday morning?
You tell me.
Okay, so we will have a site visit on Saturday the twenty-first. Also, if you can get, have a conversation with the building commissioner. Come up with a decision, come in with a decision of where you're gonna put the external, the second means of egress, just to make sure you, all the setbacks and everything are, no other issues, so that we can, at the next meeting, it should be expedited pretty quickly.
I just wanna mention something. Mr. Jean brought up a point, real connections of your water and sewer.
I'll find out about that.
I would start your conversations either through Mr. Jean or he'll direct you who to speak with. Because you don't wanna get the, you know, eight, seven eighths of the way down the line here and then you find out.
Yes.
Gonna be a major change, all of a sudden the egress isn't gonna be here. Neither the garage door is gonna be here. Then you would be back here and you're talking a couple more months.
Yeah, I, yeah. No, I'll find out right away before I even see you guys. I'm gonna.
That'd be perfect.
It'll be tomorrow or the next day.
That's a pretty simple question to get answered.
Yeah.
Shouldn't they have an answer for that by Saturday with no problem?
Yep, okay, good.
DPW director.
That's a yes or a no.
It's a pretty easy one, yeah. I think I've already given the answer, but again, I don't wanna speak for him.
I think you're probably right. Okay. I'll entertain a motion and to continue the hearing to the next meeting.
I'll make motion, continue it next month.
So move, a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Closed, none. Okay, see you Saturday and we'll continue this meeting. Nine AM.
I'll see you soon, well, thank you.
Continue this.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
June meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Next case before us tonight. It is case number twenty-two oh five oh two. It's a special permit. The applicant is Mr. Robert Luet. Location is sixty-nine Lincoln Street and it's a request to operate an indoor recreational facility. It was denied because operating an indoor recreational facility at sixty-nine Lincoln Street, Garden of Mass, parcel IDR twenty-two one thirty-six, is located in a general residential three zoning district and does not comply with chapter six seventy-five, attachment one of the city code of gardener table of usage, which states that the use indoor recreation requires a special permit issued by the gardener zone of appeals. Mr. Luet, Agent Ordery, Mr. Luet.
Yes, hi, I'm Robert Luet, owner of A. Francis Contracting. We're a design-build company. And we're also.
Yep, I'm Rebecca Wilson. I own Just Dance. We've been in downtown Gardner for, we're going on our twelfth year now. We're at forty-eight Parker Street currently. Unfortunately, we do have to move, so I spent the time trying to find a great space, a space that's safe for our kids to grow, large enough to hold our dance studio. So then I met Robert here, he has a great building. It's sixty-nine Lincoln Street, it's right on the corner of Cross and Lincoln. It has a good parking lot, it has other businesses as well on Cross Street, but it's a nice, it's a lot quieter than where we are now, so I believe that's safer for the kids. They're not gonna be having to run across the road in downtown Gardner trying to get to their parents' car. There's a parking lot right next to the building. And I think it'd be easier to drop off and pick up, too, and save the parents, so they're not. Some, some people complain that the parents stop in the middle of downtown where we are now, just to drop their kids off. So there's plenty of room over here for them to pull over to the curb to, to drop them off and go up. But I, he'll, he'll do more of like the exact plans.
Sure.
Part two.
Yeah, so we, we were looking for a house, for a home to bring our business twenty-five, thirty years ago and we, and I know Leo pretty well, the chance. It was a Unitarian church, so it was an assembly building to begin with. And so.
That was the church at one time?
Yes, it was, yeah.
Kid, yeah.
Yeah, it was an assembly church. It's the first food pantry in Gardner. It's quite a, quite a history back there, back then. So when he, when he bought the, the building, I guess he had a change of use at that time. He was warehousing some additional furniture for resale and all that. So we have a small little dock on the left-hand side. We have, so the building's really situ, it's, it's really unique the way he situated the building. Currently, right now, what he did is that he, he added a second floor. So when you come up through, through this exit here, this entrance here, you have a, he's, he's placed all these solid filled lolly columns and he made a set of egress stairs going up to the second floor with a conveyor to bring his furniture. So it was really, really well-built and it's structurally sound. I'm working right now with a, with a PE, an engineer, just to go, go through the particulars here and so we can get the approval. If we get approved this evening, we certainly would wanna get the, further our drawings with a, with an engineer. It's got great access, so we, you know, we do have a, an entrance way here off of Lincoln Street. And then directly across the street is Sacred Heart. Now, I'm not sure exactly what denomination's in there now, but Sacred Heart. We've got, on the left-hand side, we've got the Cube Smart. Then the adjacent, there was, there was a three-story apartment building right over here that was taken down and it's a parking lot. And we have our neighbor over here, we have a neighbor in the backyard over here. So we've been very friendly, friendly with our neighbors throughout the years. The next-door neighbor takes care of the property, that's all along and all that. We did some work for our next-door neighbor when his, when one of the sons was coming home from California, built a little place for him to stay. So we're really, we're trying to be mindful of where we are. But, you know, we're facing all of that. So really, we don't have any interaction with the backyard at all. So we do have parking. We designed, we're right here, we have two spaces here. We have some additional spaces here and we have more spaces here. This off-street parking over here. And we currently do not use this as off-street parking here, but this would be a great drop-off zone for, for, for the kids when they come up. So on the first floor, you come up here, drop the kids off. This is our second means of egress. It was the original vestibule of the church. So it has a nice set of stairs going up to the second floor. Since then, we've blocked all of that off, but all we have to do is open that, open that up again. And, and then, and so, so our, our mains of egress here, we're thinking of putting a handicapped accessible ramp here. So we, you'll be able to enter it from here or the, or the ramp up here to the second floor, to the second, second set of stairs. We're probably gonna build a partition wall over here and maybe a little waiting room for the, for the adults when they come here. We have over seven thousand square feet. We are, we're a design-build company, but we, you know, we own a, an excavation business and a farm business, but we house all our stuff in Hubbardston, Mass. So you don't have any need for, you know, we don't have, for any.
You don't have any interior storage in there now?
Yeah, we do. It's just full of stuff that, we, we do a lot of teardowns. So it's just full of stuff. It's, there's no really value to it, so we're just gonna clean it up when we're saying like, oh, if you don't use any of this space. Currently, right now, our office space is here. I have roughly around, I fluctuate anywhere from ten to fifteen employees. You know, I got an office manager, we do our day-to-day office management of our projects here. So the rest of the building is really not being utilized.
So the office, your office there will remain?
The office still will remain.
Will remain?
Yep.
Utilization would be both floors for the dance studio or just one floor or?
So we were thinking.
Yeah, we were thinking the, the lobby would be downstairs. Because we were talking about we do have over here next to the bathroom, too. And then have a dance studio upstairs.
So we do, we have an existing bathroom right now, we do use here. And there's a door there shutting that off.
Yeah, so that could be locked, so you don't go into.
Yeah, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna probably take this wall down here. We, we need to make the bathroom more handicapped accessible, so we'll probably remove the door, that type of thing.
So the bathroom's on the second floor presently?
It's on the first floor.
Okay, but you said you're gonna use the second floor, too.
No, no, I, that's, that's a mistake on my end, but.
No, for a, a dance studio, yes.
Yeah, dance studio would be on the second floor. So I'll just show you the floors, so you can see.
So you don't need a restroom on the same floor as your dance studio?
Well, ideally, we wouldn't.
We could build it, if, if, we could build just about anything, so.
I, I mean, I think it doesn't have anything to do with us, but to me, it just doesn't make.
Go up the stairs. Ideally, we wouldn't, because it would get into our dance space, but a bathroom could be right above the current bathroom.
Yeah, yeah, there's, yeah, we can just extend, you know, the utilities directly above. So you'll see here, this is the basement and you can see, you know, all the structures down here go all the way down. So it's really, really well-built. But this is the space above. And why it's unique is it's a cathedral ceiling. So it's the old church ceiling up there right now. What we're proposing to do is we're gonna take all of that down and just re-insulate and put up new sheetrock, blue board or plaster and finish the space. But what makes it so unique, there are no partition walls in this interior at all. This is just clean, straight space. When we, when we bought this originally, my daughter attended a dance, actually.
Yeah, I danced with his daughter when I was younger. And we didn't know that until like one of my dance parents like introduced us and then we started talking.
So we initially bought this, we said, wow, what an amazing dance studio this would be for, for, for the community, you know? And then I, then we heard the plight and, and we said, we're just housing junk up here. You know, we're not using, we're really not using this.
More stuff.
Yeah, it's just more stuff.
How many?
Yeah.
How many students do you have at a time?
So we have, well, it ranges, I would say an average of ten, ten per class. And we have two rooms right now.
So twenty?
Yeah, give or take. Like some, some are like a little smaller.
Do you have recitals and things like that as well?
We do, not, not at the studio, though. We have our recital this weekend, it's at Mayor Gansett, though. So we go outside for Nutcracker and our recital. So there's no need for like parents to be up here in the, in the dance rooms.
So they're distracting to the students.
Yes. It's better for them not to be up there.
So they'll be able to watch their child upstairs.
That's what we have, we have the TVs in the lobby. So then the parents stay in the lobby and they can watch on the screen, so they can still see their child.
I know this building, because I grew up on Peabody Street.
You did?
Wow. And I know when that was a church.
Yeah, oh, wow.
And I know when it converted to the chances and when in between, being mischievous children, we would get in that building.
Oh.
And you'd go all around.
Statual limitations is over, so you have to.
You would say, this is really cool in here.
Yeah.
It's big.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's funny, my next-door neighbor had, he was a caretaker of a Sacred Heart church and he said he did the same thing when he was a kid.
Oh, he must've been the other kid running around.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's really ideal, it's, so this vestibule area here, you know, I don't know whether we'll end up, you'll have a secondary rule or whatever, but it's, it's, it's our means of egress. So it's our second means of egress here. Also, I guess it used to be a tower on top of this.
Yes.
A steeple. That, that was taken down. I saw some old pictures of it, it was pretty, pretty nice stuff.
Do you still have the driveway on the Lincoln Street side, on that back corner?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so the, so we have a small, we're gonna clean this up a bit. You know, we have excavators and all of that. I wanted to clean the front entry up. This is a huge cement fortress over here. I'm like, wow, I wanted to dull all this up, redo this wall and fix it up a bit. Make the egress just friendly here. I can do another means of egress here for kids for a drop-off. But we thought Lincoln Street would be maybe a better drop-off point, just because it's less.
A little quieter.
The thing, I was looking at, you talk about drop-off, I was gonna ask you to gate it off. Because when kids get in the parking lot, and those are granite stairs that go right up from Cross Street, right up to.
Yeah, we're gonna.
And they wanna play on that, next thing, somebody falls down the stairs into Cross Street.
Yes, yeah.
That would be a safety concern for me.
How many parking spaces do you have on site, you plan?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, currently, twelve.
How many do you need?
Like, do I need?
Yeah, in the, in the code, based upon the use, there's a calculation. Did you run that calculation? I'm assuming this, it's gonna fit under this category, and it's obviously the decision of the zoning enforcement officer, but it says a religious club or large civic center or other place of assembly. It's one space per seventy-five square feet of assembly area.
That's upstairs, the assembly area.
Yeah, the upstairs part.
That's over a hundred spaces.
Yeah, that's crazy.
I mean, right now, the-
Cause the, the, so with the dance studio, we need a big space, but that huge space would never be full. Like I said, if we had, um, that whole upstairs room with ten kids in it, so it's not like we're putting the maximum amount of people that could fit in that space.
But you do two classes at ten now. So, you're only now gonna do one class of ten instead of two classes?
We would still do two. The majority is a drop-off. So, I would say like, three-year-old, three to five, their parents stay, sometimes five to seven. Seven and older, like, they're, you know, they'll stay for like, three or four classes, so their parents just drop them off, like, after school, pick them up at the end of the night. So, it would really more, be more like the younger kids, so probably, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have, um, say there's ten and ten, twenty, we would never need the twenty parking spaces.
How many people at one time would you have there, including your staff?
Well, we have like, two teachers, so it's, it would be, if we had ten and ten, so that's twenty, twenty-two. And then say some parents stay, so that would be like thirty-two. Right, ten parents, ten kids, two teachers.
Now, you're running the two classes simultaneously?
Yes, yeah, well, sometimes, like, sometimes there's, like, say one goes fifteen minutes longer than another.
Do you own a parking lot across the street, the empty lot now?
We had, oh, I guess I'm killing myself, cause we had an opportunity to buy that thing.
That's Manny's appliance.
Yeah, yeah, Manny, well, Manny's using it right now, I think they're subletting it or something.
Yeah, they're like, rent, I don't, I don't know if they own it or rented it.
Who owns it, do you know?
I don't know, I thought it was Cube.
Uh, Cube Smart.
Yeah, I think they, I think they're, they own it, I think, I'm not, I'm not so sure, but they may, yeah, yeah.
I mean-
But there is off-street parking there too.
Yeah.
And in behind the church, there's a parking lot.
Yes.
That belongs to the church. You know, it was part of the old Simplex time recorder and all that, right directly behind the church, and, I mean, there's a possibility if you had an agreement with them or whatever.
Yeah.
The thing is, we have to be careful of, because if you do have agreements, they're not in perpetuity. You know, they could cease at some time, and if still operating, now we have a def- deficit on parking places, especially comes the wintertime, what, what do you do? So, that's something we look at, you know, very closely. Are those nine-by-eighteen spaces in there, size?
That's a good question, cause I had, I had my designer design that, but he didn't, uh, which, well, yes.
Oh, yeah, nine-wide.
It's probably about that, yeah.
It looks like a nine-by-eighteen space.
Definitely looks like nine-by-eighteen for sure. I mean, you could certainly get eighteen in there easily, yeah.
So, this is much better parking than we're used to right now.
Oh, I know what your parking looks like.
So, this is amazing for, for us to move to.
There's three plans up there, C-one.
Yeah, it was just, yeah, this is just an overall sense of what the building is.
C-one wasn't, it isn't in the application package, so can we leave that, leave that with us just for-
Oh, absolutely, I believe all, all of this is still in there. But, uh, you know, obviously, we're, you know, we're gonna comply with, uh, the codes, and, um, but I didn't wanna get into big design effort here, but we knew that, we said, yeah, we'll just, we can go. And then I said, if we can, then we're gonna, we're gonna take our next step to our, uh, finalize the design and bring it in the engineer and our stamps and-
Well, I know I can speak for Randy, but I'm sure we'll wanna take a view of this.
Yes.
Possibly next Saturday, if we're coming out to do one, then we could do it after, if these gentlemen have time.
This coming Saturday?
Oh, you have it.
Is that what you-
I know, I have my dance recital, but that's, I, I probably don't have to be there.
We could probably do it, can we do it the following week?
Well, why don't we put down a hold for the moment? There are, as, as we mentioned with the other applicant before you, uh, there's nine criteria you have to address in the issuance in the, for a special permit.
I just wanna make, I can make a statement at this point, Randy, before you start. If you look under, in the ordinance, six seventy-five attachment one, I forget the number, but I'll find it here in a second. Number fifty-four, this is indoor amusement, fitness, recreational, that's what it's being like that. You applied under a special permit. If you go across, it's an NP.
It's a variance.
Not permitted, that's a variance.
Correct.
So, you're applying for something that doesn't apply to this.
Change of use, correct, for, from R-three to an assembly?
Oh, you're close. But I think, uh, continue going forward and work with us, have a conversation with the building commissioner, okay?
Yes, yeah.
And, uh, I just wanted to make you aware, because once in a while, it happens, somebody applies to the wrong one. And you spend all the effort trying to convince us, and you say, not applicable, so that, you don't want that to happen.
Certainly, yeah.
So, I think a brief conversation and see what's going here. But then, you know, you can continue working on looking at parking sizes, if you're making some changes, if you strike up some kind of parking arra- arrangement with somebody. Yeah, cause you're in mostly, I'm gonna call it a commercial area. You had a formerly a little neighborhood, uh, red and white grocery store.
And there's a jam that's similar.
You got a hairdresser. Then you've got Cube Smart, you've got, uh, what's the other place?
Leo's got his, well-
Mead Corporation, Mead Corrugated, back there.
Yes, yeah.
And, uh, got the playground, so just going up central, that's central, Lincoln and Maple. That's where you attach the residential, but it's all going away from there.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, if you wanna go through the criteria for a special permit.
Please do.
And then, uh, you can go through it, it's, I can open it for you, I know where it is in there, it's in one of these last pages.
You've adjusted in your application.
Do you need your, uh, application?
Yes, if you don't mind, yeah.
I told my wife about this tonight, she was like, wow, that'd be great.
Yeah, would be great. We have ballroom, we can ballroom. Get you in there, all right, all right, we'll talk about it after.
My kids are way too old now.
Okay, criteria number one.
Yeah, so, uh, special permit criteria, the property's located in the G, G, well, G-three zone. So, it was interesting to see that residential did, you know, I don't know what the definition between residential three and G, G-three.
What is general residential three?
Yeah.
The, the, there's only one, and it's general residential three.
Oh, that's, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, yeah. Uh, the property is on a corner lot with an industrial zone across the street, as well as an operating church. To the operation of the business, the operation of a small dance studio would be compatible with the current neighborhood and character. So, meaning that, you know, it's not really interacting with the neighbors behind us, you know? Uh, they're seeing a lot of activity just with, uh, Manning across the street.
Yeah, the trucks.
Yeah, the trucks and all of that, yeah. Do you want me to continue?
Sure, number two, the-
Uh, the property has a parking lot that allows for easy access to building to safe for vehicles and pedestrian movement within sight, as well as providing a drop-off location in the front of the property. So, what I would do is, like I say, we would do a really good study to see, you know, when we were saying the drop-off zone here, just like you were saying, you know, we were gonna pull those stairs out and rebuild all of this, it's just a disaster. And it'll give us the ability to kind of, I love what our neighbor did over here, he really dolled up the, the front entry. We do this, kind of the same thing to give it a nice appearance, but, um, I think, yeah, ideally, as a drop-off zone, this is, this is the place right here, because you come here, they drop the kids off, and they're up and-
Yeah, and then he's gonna pull over.
Yeah, and, and, but as a secondary, we would certainly do that also. So, there are, there are two places that we could, we could possibly enter the property. Uh, number three, the property has a parking lot on the premises that currently provides a minimal of twelve parking spaces. If all these spaces, yeah, and I just, so, we have an existing dock right now that we do not use. We're gonna take that off, we're gonna just take that off, and that'll provide another parking space right over here. That's where the twelfth is. If the clients were to park on the street, there are two pedestrian crossways within our boundaries of the property. Uh, clients would also be, have the ability to drop off on Cross Street, certainly, we just talked about that. And there's a set of stairs that leads to the Cross Street property that would need to be retrofitted and redone. The property will provide ample bathroom facilities for proper operation of dance studio. I think we're gonna, we'll answer that question. If we need to put another bathroom up there, we'll just, we'll just add another bathroom. There's, there's more than enough space on that, on that second floor. And I think it'd probably be best just to stack it somewhere in this general vicinity.
So, again, so that I'm clear, the proposed use, the dance studio is all gonna be on the second floor with the exception of parents' waiting room.
The vestal, yeah.
The, the rest of the first floor is still utilized as part of your business.
Yeah, it's just, uh, general tools, and, and we use the basement the same way, we just put general tools in there, like a warehouse space, yeah, yeah.
All right, um, number four, it's, the building is already connected to water, so is there a sprinkler system in the building?
No, you currently have a sprinkler system in the building at all.
Oh, okay, and then, uh, where does the surface water drainage go?
It goes to the town. Um, there's, uh, currently, right now, it's just, the runoff from the, from the street goes in, into the parking facility and just drains.
Are they catch basins?
Pardon?
Are they catch basins, or where does it run down the street?
There, there is a catch basin below, below where we're located, where the majority of the water lands. Some of it's, the water goes off to, you know, uh, Cross, yeah.
Yeah, and your parking lot, it slants down towards Cross Street. But you go where those stairs are, that's all the, I don't wanna call it a berm, but it's all dirt, grass, and everything else, so from runoff, unless it's frozen, it's absorbing all that before it really gets-
It certainly does, it doesn't get down to, uh, yeah, it doesn't get down to the bottom of the street here, yeah. So, when we snow, we snow blow the parking facility, sometimes we'll, we'll take one of our trucks and push the snow to the sides in a berm. We never had any problems.
How long have you been in that location?
How long, how we been in there?
Have you been in there?
Twenty-some-odd years now, yeah. Yeah, we've been there for a while, yeah. It's a great spot, super quiet, yeah.
Those all church-going people there.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Number, number five, nuisance, not considered nuisance due to air, water pollution, erosion, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibrations, lights.
Yeah, so the operation of the dance studio will not constitute a nuisance to the neighborhood, we feel it wouldn't. Uh, the property is sitting on the corner with minimal, uh, you know, neighbors, meaning just that we're not really facing any of our neighbors.
Kind of outdoor lighting you're gonna have.
But currently, we have, we have, uh, each egress has a light on it, so we have, we have an existing light down here.
The question is, what time are your classes?
So, we are after-school hours, so we're Monday through Thursday, four to eight, and then Saturday morning, like nine to twelve forty-five, one.
So, four to eight, is that?
Yeah, we're, we're done at four o'clock, so we're out.
I'm thinking which time is dark at four o'clock.
But even in wintertime, they would need lighting.
Yes, yeah, so currently, right now, we have a permit light that stays on all the time, and, and it's, uh, it's night-activated. So, basically, at nighttime, it turns on, we have two means of egress lights over here, we have an additional light here. And that's been, that's been adequate, but certainly, we would, again, probably add, there's an additional light over here, but this should be all lit. This would be all lit and well, uh, well-lighted, certainly we're-
So, then are you proposing additional lights along the drop-off, which you're showing is a drop-off?
I would say, I would say yes, because we're gonna wanna certainly light up, light up the stairwell.
What kind of lights?
You know, you know, we, we could put motion-activated lights there also, uh, so they would shut off. Cause there's really no other need besides when you're moving and walking to have the light on. So, maybe a, a motion-activated light in this direction, someone here to light, light that. I can, we could put lamppost lighting if it's required by code. Um, we're certainly gonna meet all code restrictions in terms of lighting. Uh, we're gonna have that reviewed with an, with an engineer, yeah, yeah.
So, all of the proposed lights will meet light-skies standards?
Yes.
Or dark-skies stands, whatever they call it?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Not in, in substantial inconvenience or hazard to a body, as vehicles, pedestrians?
Uh, okay, so we say here, the proposal, uh, to my best of knowledge, meets all provisions of Gardner City Code, chapter six seventy-five, section one-one-seven-zero, and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter. My, my designer actually filled this, this application out, so I'm not exactly sure, uh, myself, what chapter six seventy-five, section one-one-seven-zero refers to, you know?
Special permits. Special permits.
Okay, there we go. Knows the stuff.
And that's where these nine criteria are listed.
Yes, okay, very good. Number eight, uh, the proposal shall not have detrimental impact on the city's services, tax base, and employment opportunities. So, we're gonna rent the space out, uh, you know.
Bless you.
She's in dire need of, uh, a place to go, um, and we'll figure, we'll figure logistics in terms of all of that. So, that, you know, my need really, honestly, cause I could do anything with this building, keep it the way it is. But when I heard the need is when we came to the call, so, we're feeling at this point, uh, you know, we'll do what it requires to have this space usable.
But you park a couple vehicle, your own vehicles there?
Yeah, we've got a couple vehicles that we're gonna, we're gonna remove, actually, you know, there's some, we've got two vehicles that will, we have one, actually, one vehicle that's, will stay there. And we're probably gonna be parking that vehicle, which would be probably one of these slots over here, but keep this open. We leave roughly around four o'clock, everyone's home. We travel, ninety percent of our work is in Boston. So, we work in Newton-Wesley and those, those neighborhoods, so we keep our vehicles on-site in locations, and then our, all our large trucks and all that go to Hubbardston, yeah. We have a, a pretty big facility there, keep everything. Uh, number nine, let's have you. Uh, the proposal to operate a dance, uh, studio at the property located at sixty-nine Lincoln Street will allow us, allow Just Dance Performing Arts Studio, a business that's been in operation in the city of Gardner for over ten years, to continue, continue and thrive with the potential of continued growth too. And then number ten, the property at sixty-nine Lincoln Street was not subject to a zoning map amendment.
Any questions from the board at this point? Not yet.
Well, I just, but I, I guess more of a statement, uh, if we're gonna proceed to go forward, and we've talked a lot, a lot of changes here.
Yes, yeah.
Parking, et cetera, lighting, locations, uh, we'd like to see the plans updated that shows actually where it's going to be. Cause I think, as I stated to the prior applicant, you know, you forget about it in a month, what was said or where it's gonna go. So, if we can get it hard, copy on paper.
Sure.
And then that will be the most current, and then we can always refer to that plan. And, you know, if the building commissioner needs to refer to it, there's a plan, and that's the one that was accepted, and, you know, that's what we work from.
Yeah, so if I could get, you know, if I could get a week or so, just to kind of put this together.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think I want some additional clarification on the parking as well. What, what's available for on-street parking in the area, if it's, you know, how much is, you know, what, what, how many spaces do you actually need? And maybe that is a question of, uh, doing a census of your existing clients.
Yeah.
Who stays, who doesn't, you know, a survey of sorts or something like that, so, you know, if you run by the calculation of using just the assembly space, it's like, you know, you need twenty-eight spaces, and is that, is that, you know, does that make sense?
Yeah, I could easily get you, um, numbers, even like down to the hour, like at this time, we have this many parents here.
I, I mean, I, I, I'll be honest, I've been through downtown at certain times, and is, there's a lot of cars.
Yeah.
On-street parking, there's a lot of cars.
Yeah, yeah.
In your block, so, you know, I, I don't know, you know, there are a lot of other businesses that are operating during those hours in there, so-
Isn't that sad that they're taking us away?
So, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I think we need to get a handle on the number of spaces you think you'll- So, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I think we need to get a handle on the number of spaces you think you'll need.
When can you maximize some parking spaces, you know, either on-street, there? Maybe you approach Mannings, maybe he's got a section of that lot that he doesn't use. Dedicated strictly to the dance.
What's interesting with Manning is that, uh, they only occupy that during the day. All those during the evening hours, they're out.
Cause all the deliveries are daytime.
That's right. And it's really.
Where their employees parked.
That's where their drivers are. Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's some homework you're doing.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay, open it up. Yep. You have questions at this point? All right, I'll open it up to the audience. Um, any representatives of the city, like, with any comments with regard to this application?
I don't think I have anything right now.
No? Mr. Jean is our only representative of the city present and he's, right now, I think it's okay. Um, any abutters to the property would like to speak with regard to this application? Any abutters to the property? Like to speak with regard to this application? Any abutters to the property? Any interested parties like to speak with regard to this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the application? Any interested parties? Being none? I'll entertain a motion, I think, to continue the hearing, to get the additional information that we need.
So may.
Second.
And also entertain, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so, uh, I think, um, continuation, uh, we did continue the hearing and a, a site visit is.
Yeah, so really, when we will do the site visit, it'll depend upon when you get your plans updated.
That's what I'm thinking, yes, yeah.
And get that, have a conversation with Mr. Jean.
Yeah.
And what are your hours of operations? Cause I know you said sometimes eight at night, but.
Yeah, so we're four to eight, um, Monday through Thursday, and then Saturday mornings.
Okay, Saturday, what, eight to twelve, nine to two?
Yeah, nine to one.
Good.
A little set.
Right now, yep. All right, so, um, keep us apprised, we, we don't have an administrative assistant at the current time, so we, we won't know when.
Okay.
Your revisions will come in, cause I think, like, remember Lefan said that, I think we'd like to go out after they're submitted.
Yeah, I mean, he's in house for me, so we can, we can get rolling on this ASAP. Yeah.
And if, uh, you know, electronically, if they're sent electronically to Roland, if you forward them to us. So we'll, we'll, we'll know then when they come in, if they can come electronically.
Electronically, he has our phone numbers at the same time.
That would be great.
Yeah, we did have a conversation with one of our engineers out of Concord and, uh, as we were, you know, we talked about the initial structure, and we just wanted to make sure that we were in good standings there, and it looked really good. So, um, you know, the floor system and all that, you know, now it's, now it's updating the logistics of lighting and egresses and whether we're gonna be putting a bathroom upstairs and so on.
Okay, you're gonna leave one set of, I forget which, not A two, was it A one?
Yeah, do you need the full set or?
No, just, uh, the A one's the only one that we're missing in the package, I think.
Take the bathroom upstairs is a good idea, because all the little ones, all of a sudden, say.
Yeah.
But then they need their parents. That's the problem. So you have to bring them.
Now you're gonna, everybody running back and forth or?
Yeah, that's it. Usually they head over the, the little ones will go with the mom.
Do you want a folder?
What?
A folder. Thank you, sir. Okay, so this hearing is continued to June meeting, which is, what's the date in the year?
Fifteenth.
June fifteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. The Tuesday's the fourteenth.
The fifteenth, I'm going June fifteenth.
Flag day.
Yeah, June fourteenth. But you'll receive a notice too.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least.
I was gonna say that.
I was the first one here, remember?
We're saving the best for last.
Yeah, one, one second. I gotta go through the, uh, procedure of reading your dial and everything. Paperclip on the right hand side really throws me. The paperclip on the right hand side really throws me.
I, I put all those papers on there.
It's for your left hand.
That's exactly right.
You're not in your right mind.
Yeah. And we had diapers with pins. My wife told me I put the di, the pins on wrong. So it's left handed.
Okay. The next, uh, case before, uh, the board tonight, the last hearing we have scheduled for this evening, it's case twenty twenty-two oh five oh three. It's for variance. The applicant is Donna Longo Gorski. And the location is sixty-six Brook Lane in Gardner, and it's a request to construct a three-season porch. It was, um, parcel number IDW twenty-seven twenty-four dash two. It's located in a rural residential two district and is denied, cause it does not comply with chapter six seventy-five, article two, table of lot, area frontage yard, and height requirements of the code of Gardner. Ms. Longo Gorski.
All right, in your packet, or in the packet that I did, um, the guy who came out to survey, um, the area, he gave us one to scale, but you know what? My eyes aren't good, so I just had it increased so that everybody can see it, cause I couldn't see it.
Yeah.
Looks scaled to me.
Thank you.
The little one, he from, he sent it, you know. But at any point, uh, the proposal is that right now there is, um, uh, a twelve-foot deck there, and what we wanna do is just put a fourteen-foot deck where it is, just overlay it. And I think his plan shows that that's what he's gonna do. Now, between our house and the next property, there's a twenty-foot easement. So you can see where the line goes right into the easement area. The, and I guess what it comes down to.
Each of you are ten foot each side of that easement?
Well, no, actually, the rules were when they built the house, Roland had pointed this out to me, that the plans or the zoning board had set a ten-foot e, um, leeway, you know, between properties and easements and whatnot. What has happened is they changed it to twenty feet, so now we have to do twenty feet. So the house is like thirteen point, I don't know.
Two feet.
Something to the easement line of the property line. Where the deck is, where we've proposed that it would be, it's eighteen point seven. So I guess there's a variance that is required, because I am sure one point three feet. Now, but where the, where the, the footage goes, that one point three feet, it doesn't interfere with the easement. It doesn't bother anybody else's property. It doesn't change the topographical area, the drainage, um, the use of the easement. Um, I would say that we more or less maintain the easement, cause we want it to look nice. So where the one point three feet is, it's like in a mulch area and where trees are planted.
Okay.
Um.
Now, does, uh, your application says it's going to be an enclosed deck?
Oh, yeah. I was just gonna.
Like a three-season kind of thing or?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, I've got pictures here, cause who knows what I needed, when I was trying to do overkill. And we started to take the rail.
Could just tell an awful lot. They, I wish more applicants provided pictures.
I, I should get this one to the gentleman down there too. Oh, and I got five, so you get one too.
Thank you. So is that a new deck?
Uh, it wasn't a new deck. That is, the, that was what was there. It had rails on it. We just took the rails.
Took the rails off, okay.
And we took the rails off, cause we were, we were anticipating that this was gonna be an easy fix. And Roland sort of just, uh, encouraged me and said it was not gonna be an easy fix. But in any way, um, the point of contact to the easement does not above anybody's property. We've already contacted our neighbors all around us. Everybody says, go ahead, it's not gonna bother us. That's why nobody's here. They did ask if they should come. Um, so, and where the deck goes, it's just, the house is closer to the property line than the deck is gonna be. So. And I guess that's the, the, the biggest gist of it.
Okay.
Is this part of the easement area right here?
Yes.
What is not, which is shown in the photographs is not being landscaped or anything.
And this, this gravel area that is the easement?
There's, there's mulch. This is mulch. That, that's on our property. There's almost this mulch, and then there's the easement, and then there's mulch on the other property line.
Now, who put the trees, the bushes in here?
That is part of what they call, uh, the association. They did them. They're not attractive trees. They shouldn't have been there. They were never pruned. They, you can see that the trees are very leggy and they only flower at top, so it would be my hope.
What kind of easement is this?
You know what? It's just for a waterway. Um, it's non-electrical. It's just a water easement. People can walk through it. People very rarely do. And, um, I guess if you try to go all the way through the back of the yard, there's gravel up to a certain point, up to where there's a shed. And after that, it's just land. And if you follow that land, you can go through a little path and get into another neighborhood. But nobody usually uses it, because it's not, it's not really easy to use. You might see some kids use it.
Path go down to that other foster?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where it goes.
So this must be the.
I think it's access for the city property between the two projects though.
Must be a water, water line in there?
It's sore in the.
It's access utility and pedestrian easement.
I've never seen any utility people.
Not very clear. Well, I don't think there's any utilities in it. I think it's made for the, access the city property behind there. I think it was an agreement. It was made when subdivision was there.
Sure.
Isn't it wide out there too?
Not to my knowledge.
Uh, down further.
What's further down?
There's a little, yeah, a little brook or something.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Steve Gorski, sixty-six Brook Lane.
Thank you.
And she is the host with me.
Okay with me.
But there's no detriment to anyone's property.
Yeah, so there's, for a variance, I was just gonna get into that. There are basically three criteria that you must, uh, must address for a variance. First, first one is, is, does your request create or aggravate a safety hazard?
No, not in any way, shape, or form.
Not to the neighbors. It's not gonna, is it, won't impact the, the easement?
No, not in, no, cause it's still far, far enough away. And the deck, we already have an existing deck there. And where it is, it's only going out two feet to the backyard and one foot to the side.
You're not raising the deck at all. It's gonna stay at the same plane?
It's gonna, it is gonna be raised, because from the house, the sliding door to the deck is a step down, so we're just gonna raise up the level of the house.
Got a question for you.
Sure.
Um, your original deck, you said, was twelve foot by twelve foot. So basically, you're extending two feet along three sides of your deck. Why can't you leave the side closest to the easement there and move the four feet?
You know, I thought of that, but to me visually, it doesn't look right, because the house, believe it or not, the house is not set the way you would see a house straight. The house is on an angle. I don't know if you've been down this, this street, Mr. Lefan, you said you went down the street at one point. The house is almost like on a little bit of an angle. So when you come into the house, it's got an open concept house, cause it's got a high ceiling. There's the, the sliding doors, and when you go out, it makes more sense for it to be straight. Otherwise, when you have to even deviate like one foot, because I did try doing the plan with one foot, it sort of offsets the house. It offsets the back of the house. It offsets visually the front of the house as for, for, I guess, for a visual flow.
How would you, how would offset the, how would it visually affect the front of the house? So you can't see the deck from the front of the house.
No, coming into the house. The room is not gonna be square. It's gonna be more rectangle. And I guess that makes a big difference for me, because that's just how I see it in my own head. I don't see, and I think if you were on the outside in the backyard looking at the house, it looks a little odd that the, that it's offset, you know? And I did think, and I did put down somewhere in the record that it's a big financial, cause I did think of this too. I did think that, okay, just take the door out. You know, just make it right. It'd be a big expense to take that, the slider door that is there now, take it out and try to.
Reset it.
Reset the, the room, reset the wall on the other side.
I, I'm gonna agree with that statement. To pull that out and put a new slider in is expensive.
Yeah.
But the issue is, you have adequate space on either side. Your hardship that you're talking about is just your vision of where it, keeping it straight and in line. It's not a financial hardship due to shape, topography, or soil conditions. It's a perceived vision that you have, and that's all it is. You can technically move, you can come out to your fourteen feet, but you move this way. You know, so your door might be off-center a little bit.
So you're saying this, I can go out this fourteen inch feet? Yeah, but then you get to the bulkhead. I mean, you get closer to the bulkhead.
Well, you're only going two feet.
Right, I was only gonna go one feet.
One foot on each side.
I was gonna do one foot on each side. So you're saying I should only go?
Well, it's twelve and it's going to fourteen, so it would be four feet.
Yeah, two feet and two feet.
Well, no, it's one feet, one foot, and this is two foot.
Would go four feet.
Yeah, cause this is already fourteen feet here.
But it would go to, it would go to eighteen feet.
Yeah, but your deck is, it's definitely twelve by twelve.
This is, this is it right here. This is the fourteen inch thing. The twelve, go ahead.
Yeah, if it was twelve by twelve, okay, it would come to here, twelve, and then this would come out.
Yeah.
The two feet.
I know. It doesn't look visual.
See, it's an artistic hardship that you're looking at. That is not under the zoning law. It's due to shape, top, shape, topography, or soil conditions. You know, and shape doesn't mean, well, it doesn't line up in the middle of the door.
It would look nicer. They would look nicer. But first of all, there's no one on the other side to see it, and it doesn't impact anyone. And even the gentleman's lot that's next on the other side of the easement said, go ahead.
He's not on the zoning board?
No, he's not.
Who is, um, how, how close is your butter's house to your house? Is he als, also thirteen and a half feet from the?
I, no, I don't think he is. I don't know. I can't say for true. I don't, I didn't do it from his point of view. I did it from my point of view.
Yeah, I can't see you presenting an argument at this point due to a hardship, other than aesthetically, I'd like it here. So it is in the middle of the deck, you know, and that's, that's not a hardship. And the ordinance wasn't written around aesthetic values and looks. You know, it's different. When you talk about shape, your land doesn't go like this, you know, or topography rolls like that. Uh, and soil conditions, that you would not be able to pour footings or something unless you had spent tremendous amount of money. But in terms of.
We were gonna, we were gonna use the existing footings that are there. Now, if I did it the other way, we probably could not.
But you don't know that. You're making an assumption that you couldn't. Your contractor would tell you that.
He did.
He said we could.
No, he said we had to put enough, yeah.
Cause he's probably gonna have to put footings anyway, cause he puts it over there.
So yours, but what if I, what if I did thirteen by fourteen? I'm just trying to get that angle, cause the back of the, the house and the back of the yard is on that angle. You should come see a site thing.
You know, I, I guess my only thing is, you know, your closest point is this corner.
Right.
Move this corner to be one point three feet that way.
One point three feet.
That's what you're missing. It needs to be twenty feet. It may not be as quite.
In line with your door.
It might be not quite as, as skewed from the, your visually what you're thinking. It may not, it may be an insignificant.
I know. And that's what I think. I thought, oh, one point three feet.
No, but I mean, if you kept that corner twenty feet from that property line, twenty point zero 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 feet.
And you're saying just move this wall?
So this, this wall could be twelve point seven. That's what you're saying, twelve point seven there. And I don't know what this one could be.
If, whatever, as long as that corner is twenty feet.
See, when I measured that corner, it was twenty feet, but when the survey came, survey came to measure, it was eight point seven.
Because it's so close, I think, uh, they, they require a, you know, a plot plan to show where it's located.
It's on the easement, where there's just, we've put mulch and stuff like that. If I can move the easement over.
It doesn't really matter, it's, it doesn't matter with easement that when, it's not being measured from the easement, it's being measured from your property line.
If it's an easement though, isn't it an easement on their property?
The easement has nothing to do with it. We're talking about the measurement to the.
I know, but going back to my question, if they own the, the land where the easement is.
Yes.
is, they don't have an issue.
Yes, they do.
They do, they do.
Why?
Because it has nothing to do with the easement, we're measuring to the property line.
Property line is the center line of the easement.
Absolutely nothing to do with the easement, that was never measuring to.
Why?
The property line is down in the center of it.
So.
Property line is at the center of the easement, okay.
Move it this way.
Yeah.
You probably don't even need it to be here.
My decision, because it doesn't matter.
Sorry, cost me a lot of money to get here, though.
Other than you can't build it.
I know, but.
But I was just thinking visually, when you walk in the house, the front door, and you look out, if you want a square room, and if I wanted to make a sunroom, okay, you're gonna use your vision a little bit, if you wanted to make a sunroom, it'd have windows, windows, windows.
But the zoning was not designed to look into windows and square rooms, and it's the protection of the area and here, and the landowners, the protection for them.
Yeah, well, you know, and all I could see is land all around me, and it's not being moved, you know, that's how I saw it.
What I would suggest is, do you have a contractor?
Yeah.
There was somebody, yeah.
Talk to him, or.
Yeah.
And say, you know, if we're moving it this way, now you meet your setback, you probably don't have to be here. I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Jean, is that correct?
Meets the setback, there's no need for variance, that's absolutely true.
You can withdraw your application, we call it without prejudice, that means if you ever wanted to come back in, you could, but if you meet that setback requirement, and you have a discussion with him and show him the plans, he'll probably go thumbs up, you're all set.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll issue your permit when they stop building.
All right, all right, it's not the answer I wanted, but.
That happens.
I, I mean, if you, at this point, want to proceed with the application moving forward, we can, we can still proceed down there, and you can do a dual path, because, um, we can always continue the hearing till next meeting, but we're gonna wanna do a site visit, but we're gonna wanna see the corners of this.
Where the new one's gonna be in the corners, and then you have to look, the board is gonna vote, is it gonna vote in favor or not? If it votes not, now you have a two-year window before you can apply again.
Yeah, chances are, I would have to redo the plan and see.
I, you know, if, if, I don't think this point is gonna, you know, moving this one point three feet is gonna be in here someplace, it's not gonna be two, you know, you wanted a two-foot extension, it may only be a one foot to, one foot larger than your existing deck, if it's a twelve by twelve, it'd be thirteen, you know, be thirteen on this side, so, okay, you gain an extra one or two feet on the other side.
I can do thirteen.
You know what he's saying, not move it exactly, move to meet the twenty foot setback, and then make it as wide as you want.
Yeah, all right.
I mean, that's your choice.
Yeah.
It's your choice, I mean.
We can continue this and come out and look at it, um, we can still continue it, but if you choose to, say, withdraw your app because you know what you're gonna do, then you just send a letter to us, addressing and saying, I choose to withdraw my application without prejudice, don't forget those two words, without prejudice, send it in, we'll take that letter at the next meeting, read it, and then vote it, you'll vote, yes, we allow the withdrawal.
Do I have to have someone come out, a surveyor come out to get to this one point three?
I would suggest have a surveyor do it, not you.
All right.
You have somebody, so now you have a drawn record.
We have a surveyor, so.
If your surveyor can give you a, a twenty foot line, parallel to this property line, that'll give you some flexibility of where you want that corner to go.
Yeah.
And then, then that, you know, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be necessarily offset two foot, I, it's, I think it's gonna be something less than two feet, because you're on at an angle here.
Yeah, yeah, because you can see the house is on an angle.
Yeah, and that's how they built it.
Yeah, which is.
Well, we could go, you know, when we get to the end of that, we'd just cut that part off, and they could go on an angle like this.
Don't make it as square.
It would actually look good.
Yeah, well, that's true, yeah.
Or fireplace in one of them.
Just clip both corners.
The only problem you'll have is putting a cake and, and close it, they're gonna have some, some odd angles, and your, your windows might be a little more expensive.
A chimney, or a fire pit in the corner, or a little stove in the corner, you know, because a lot of decks go this way.
Sure, yeah.
Little propane fireplace or something.
Yeah, propane.
Or chimney.
That makes it, you know, expense it more than.
So cut this, just cut this, like that.
Well, to meet your twenty feet, that's what you need to do.
Yeah.
But I would suggest, you know, get a surveyor, let him mark the pins or the points where it's gotta be.
Yeah.
And then they'll have, who, who drew these plans out?
Gaffney.
Um, yeah.
No, Gerard.
Yeah.
Okay, talk to Gerard Survey, and have them make the adjustment after they get the stuff, the information from the.
Okay, okay, I'll just tell him it has to be that point.
Well, it doesn't have to be, like we said, you can proceed down the application that you presented tonight, or we've discussed a lot of different potential, you know, alterations that could happen, and it's, it's strictly, it's up to you.
So you may wanna discuss it.
We're gonna leave, we're gonna leave this hearing open, only because it gives you the flexibility to decide, because you, I, we don't want you to make a decision tonight, I don't think it would be fair to make a decision tonight, but if, I think it's important to have, have that twenty foot line defined in, in the field or whatever, and then you can get a better idea, you know.
So if my line is right here, and I cut it off here, where does my line go, to this square of the house? Is that how the, the surveyor?
That's the point it'd be measured from.
Okay.
That's the point he's gonna measure from.
All right.
And you'll be okay at that point, so, you know, think about it, you can draw up a couple sets of plans, you might even change your design.
Sketches, you know.
I think in the, the application I put, I think I handed a little plan that's not right, if you see it, you can throw it out, it was in colors.
No, it's, it's, it's submitted in, stays in.
Oh.
I mean, for, I would, if it was me doing it, I would draw this out to scale, some larger scale, and then I would, you know, make some templates of the size of the room that you're looking at, and just see how they fit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
Sure.
Would my contractor be able to figure out where that twenty foot line is?
Yeah, if, I don't know what kind of monumentation there is along your property line.
The only one you can really.
You know, I mean, that's our hard question to answer, because we don't know the qualifications of the contractor, he's not a surveyor, and the surveyor's gonna shoot the points he needs.
Oh, the contractor, yeah.
And then mark it off and see.
Yes, yeah. Here it is. Actually, probably already has the marks, that we didn't see, didn't he put some marks down?
I don't remember, I don't remember that.
Well, his, this guy, his dad is the one that originally did the whole thing there.
Yeah, I mean, we run into the thing, the thing is, you know, under zoning, you do have plenty of room here to meet the requirements of zoning, that's, a lot of times, variances where they'll get granted, because the, the applicant has no avenue of relief.
Yeah.
At all, that if I move it, I'm now into this, you know, no avenue, you do have an avenue of relief to move this and not violate the ordinance, and you speak with Mr. Jean, if you make that decision, you're, you'll be free to go.
All right, Roland, you'll probably see me next week.
You will.
He's probably getting tired of seeing me.
No, why?
I wanted to, and you know, I hate to.
This is the first time we've seen you.
I know, but it's almost like I hate to keep delaying this, you know, it's what the host.
She was living in his office for a while.
Well, you know, and that's how it works, I mean, you don't have the right answer the first time, you may not even have the right design, and that's the gentleman you work with, final weather inquiries of the city, what's needed under the ordinances, and then he's gonna help you and tell you, and that helps you design what you want.
Yeah, all right.
Staying within those parameters, and, you know, it's not a one-shot deal, this is what we are, we're here for you, to, to work with you.
Yeah, all right, well, thank you, gentlemen.
No, well, you wanna, I don't know if, um, the representative of the city.
Yeah, just let us ask.
Until, I think we're too, we're, we're too loose at this point.
I agree.
And Steve is not here in opposition, he's in just observing.
No, I'm here for the entertainment value.
Okay.
So really, there's no one here to give pro or con against this case, so let's, we vote to continue it.
I'll make them.
I'll make a motion to continue.
To June, seconded, all is a favor?
Aye.
All is opposed, none, so we'll continue this hearing until June.
And then, and then you're gonna make the, and then if I decide to withdraw, I can?
Send a letter?
And I'll.
And send it right to Mr. Jean.
I mean, if you do this, I shouldn't say this, but if you get, and you're comfortable with that twenty foot, and you can demonstrate to Mr. Jean that you meet that, you could get a permit tomorrow.
All right, I have to call.
Whereas, you know, we, we wouldn't make a decision until next month at the earliest.
In June, and if we're not.
And then you're waiting another twenty days, so you'd be, you'd be construction in August.
Yeah.
All right, I will try and see what I can come up with.
Well, think.
Yeah, I have.
Don't rush into it.
We don't want you to, we don't wanna throw up a roadblock, but we just provided you potential options to think about.
All right.
And if you wanna proceed down as you've applied, you're more than welcome to.
All right, all right, well, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, you all have a great night.
Have a great night.
All right.
Take care.
Okay, next item on our agenda is approval of minutes, I'll entertain a motion to.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Of April the nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
As printed?
Second.
All is a favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, all is opposed, none, those minutes are approved.
Sign them.
Signed. Uh, I did prepare minutes for the site visit that Mike and I.
I gotta feed you some minutes for my site visit.
And, um, so, but we don't have those this, this evening, so.
Mr. Molina's property?
Well, technically, I don't know if you need to do minutes, because you are sole person, but you can if you wish, folks.
I'll send you something, brief.
Anything else on the agenda, we have no correspondence.
No correspondence.
Et cetera.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
None.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned, eight thirty. Thank you, gentlemen.